Monday, June fifth.
Peters?
Present.
Dr.
Present.
Collins?
Present.
Blackwell?
Peak?
Present.
What is we get?
I would just want to give the flag of the United States of America. Initial Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the infinite continuum.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda after then.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda. Mr. President?
Second.
Motion by Chief. Second by Collins to approve the gentleman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Public comment, is there anybody here in the public that wishes to say anything but is not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Five day consideration to approve the council minutes from the May fifteenth. Motion.
So. Sorry.
Motion by Collins, second by Chief to approve the minutes from the May fifteen, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Bill's payable. Does anybody have any questions for Bill Credit, Mr. Chief?
Final answer personally.
Mr. Collins?
We're done.
Okay. Mr. Dr.
Do we get a final answer on that bill?
For the over enders, they have the Kirby Building and City Shop to repair.
Okay, the other thing is I asked staff to look at the Altor for bill. Does every bill they added a penny to the final number to round it up to an even number?
Peters?
Uh, based on my review and not seeing the minus one hundred percent, little things like that, to best of my knowledge, it's good.
Okay. So they must approve those payable with checking on the Altor bill?
Some of them, I'm still got a few more to go, five questions, I'll bring them up.
Nope. No way.
Everything. About to have to cross the TPC bill with the credit card bills, it's same date, same stuff.
Yeah, actually.
Nope.
Credit card on, we didn't buy twice the same stuff. On the same day. Because we had a case last month where one, we had two employees go to Sam's on the same day, spent about the same amount of money. Nevada, Nevada found out, determined that one was for a park board concession, one was for community senate. They also have bills in here that are theirs, but I want to just cross these with credit card bills.
Done, right past it, officer pay into school.
Yes, he's only as part of Mobile Team Four that were a part of it, gets pretty trained, all the thing that you have to pay in spare school.
Credits for the kids and twenty dollars, it's that for wrong registration at Summer Camp here.
And what was top bar registration for the senior team, they ended up not having a, they had a team here and a team there. So, just not all things, everybody, twenty dollars for registration.
Is that what the shirts were purchased for? Did they receive their shirts?
The ones that were, I mean, they receive shirts. Yeah, for registrations. Fifty seven dollars, it's always.
They pay the shirts.
Okay. Almost done.
It's okay.
Hidden rules twenty eight eighty. Which funding that from my.
Yeah, no.
So we've got an additional twenty eight hundred and eighty dollars on here, it's in here, it's not like here.
Service extra, that was that part running this bill running, so I don't know how they normally put it into the bill or, I mean, we've got the bill nowhere to tell you there. You can check and see if there was, there was that were approved on the last.
Objection, subject clarification others.
Okay. Second. Motion by Dr. Second by Collins to approve the bill with certification on Altovers and Hidden Hills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Consideration to approve the liquor license for Allen Jerry's town.
Right, because it wasn't in this bill on, it had to be created second. So I'm saying, you know, I've been told about it, that you probably have at least two of those.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Second by Chief to approve Challenger's liquor license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. As you hear, consideration to real cigarette permit renewals for Big Ten Mart number twenty seven, Big Ten Mart number twenty five, Casey's General Store, Dollar General Store, Eldridge Mart, and the Hy-Vee.
All the things appears other than. Uh, Dollar General is not those team. Alternative nicotine product and big, and all the rest of mine.
Anyone?
No, I'm just noting that for clarification.
Ball like motion to approve as presented.
All right, here's second.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Second by Chief to approve the cigarette permit renewals for Big Ten Mart number twenty seven, Big Ten Mart number twenty five, Casey General Store, Dollar General, and Eldridge Mart, and Hy-Vee Grocery Store. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Six A. Consideration approving proposed TIP development agreement for RICO and the annual tax of rebate based on three point two million assessed valuation for ten years at hundred percent for years one through six, ninety percent when you're seven, eighty percent on year eight, seventy percent on year nine, and sixty percent at year ten. This ten year rebate would commence upon new improvements that are completed and properly is fully assessed. Fees associated with establishing a new TIP are to be paid by RICO. That'll do, explain this a little bit.
Sure, so the last, we discussed the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee to um respond to the original request from RICO, which was the ten years rebate at a hundred percent based on the three point two million assessed value from January first of twenty twenty one. Um, after some discussion, the council countered back that proposal with a um rebate for the remaining term of the current TIP that exists, uh, based on the valuation of the four point three million dollars uh assessment. So, uh, we've been talking back and forth a little bit between um our city attorney and the attorney representing RICO, and they have come back with a uh new off, or a new proposal for a development agreement. Um, still looking to pay the fees associated with creating a new TIP district that would allow for a ten year rebate. Um, looking at the three point two million dollar assessment, um, and then after six years declining um from the ten percent to the ninety, eighty, seventy, and sixty for the remaining four years. I did send you out some projections that we got back from our attorney on what um possible revenue the, the city could look at um for a new TIP, if they retained that TIP revenue for years eleven through twenty. Um, so that's what we'd be looking at if we were going at that evaluation um for the agreement as initially proposed at ten years for a hundred percent. Questions on the values or those projections?
We've never done a TIP for twenty years.
The TIP, it putting a new TIP district, it would have a twenty year term, their proposal would still be that they would be doing a ten year rebate, um, the years eleven through twenty would be the possible revenue that the city could retain if we had projects or other TIP agreements in that district.
Who else got any questions?
Hard to predict the future, you look at uh facts as they are now and it's a give and take all the way around.
They do, we do have that option of putting a minimum assessed value in uh for the, for that rebate so that that rebate kicks in um as long as we hit that, that minimum assessed value, what their projected um investment is in that project and what that assessed value would be afterwards.
Thanks, this was a self sustaining to correct?
Correct, as long as we don't set an artificially low uh assessed value, then it would be self sustaining on its own revenue to be able to rebate that back.
We have a history of being very, very conservative and stuff on hips and not, not overdoing things, but you also have to attract businesses too, so it's part of the mechanism in place to do that.
We are looking at a reinvestment into a, a property that is right along that, that business corridor when you come into Eldridge too, so that definitely generates some um attention for additional development in that area to, to have a, a new headquarters. Um, anyone persons, do you see when you come?
The only thing I'm not sold on is the three point two million. Knowing the history of, that was last year, the assessor put a seven point one this year, they paid twelve and put another seven into. If they had a base at that seven point one that the assessor put on, and where you wanted this year, I'd be more comfortable with this. So I'm.
So the three point two is still um higher than what the established base value is for that TIP district for that particular parcel.
That's about two point one million for that.
So we're still in a position where it would be self sustaining. To rebate based on what the increment is that's being calculated on that assessed value right now.
So it's green man.
Obviously, at the end of the ten year time span, then um, you know, things very good, but then the you know, details to, to get there. Self sustaining is a good positive, but not, not the best option from the city standpoint either.
Well, we've always done probably self sustaining, you know, in the past. Um, the question is, would there be a, I didn't see it in this information, would they agree to a minimum assessment? Now, they have to meet this to get the thing, but they can't go back and argue the taxes and say now it's worth five million. If we put something like this in place.
A minimum assessed value in the agreement?
Right.
So that would be something that hasn't been discussed yet, but I'm sure we would be able to find a sort of coming for.
Depending, I mean.
Depends what it is.
Depends on what the number is, sure.
Cause the previous summer, that's what he did. Uh, hey. I'll just say round number six million for it, and turn around and argue the taxes at treatment. That's what I was sitting with the round numbers, three million today.
That's not our intention.
Well, unless it's on paper.
I understand, I assume that would be part of that development agreement.
Yeah. So was there an acceptance, have a development agreement drafted?
So the next step, um, if this is an agreement that the council is willing to move forward in discussions with, then the next item on the agenda would be um allowing our representative to go in and negotiate with their uh legal team to start negotiating the final terms of that agreement, and then that agreement would then again need to come in front of council for final approval, once we have that drafted.
Well, I would think the council would get a, a look at the draft before negotiations are made.
So for our legal team to go in and negotiate with their legal team, we've got to have a, a base uh somewhat of an agreement to go in and negotiate, because our legal team's going to need to know where, what the position of the city is going into that negotiating that they can go in and negotiate those terms based on whatever um terms we allow them to start negotiating at, and where we're willing to be in that agreement.
I think what Brian meant that we need to see that.
Right.
Before.
So this is their proposal to go into that discussion.
Cause I, I mean, if you look at the timeframe, I guess I'm not opposed to self of a new district. Um, depending on how much ground we put in. Um, but you're looking around numbers, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars over ten years.
For a new district, correct?
For the, the re. And granted, we only get, the city's portion of that is only thirty percent. Round numbers.
Yeah.
Those will cost taxpayers two to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars over ten years. Cause that'll be lost revenue going into their GRF funds.
But we'll still be bringing it in, um, if we assign it, routine it to, to projects, then that revenue will still come into the city, just in a special district fund, uh before it goes back on the tax rolls to general fund, so there's still positive cash flow to the city for that, for that agreement in that district for the years eleven through twenty.
Either years eleven through twenty, I agree, I'm talking about years five through ten.
So years one through ten, it would be whatever that agreement is with them, that the hundred percent, we would see the positive cash flow where they start declining that percentage in that, that agreement, but until then they would, they would keep the increment in their rebate, we would have anything below that increment value still coming in then to the general fund for that parcel, whatever basically we're thinking now.
Sixty eight thousand here.
Yeah, I think that's a lot to the next step, and again, we're somewhat on the time thing for them, so we don't want to, right? Make this laborious and because that's the timeframe.
We said a minimum assessment, county assessor has to sign off on that. If I'm not mistaken.
Um, under current terms for minimum assessment, or is that under the new, the new bill?
The new bill.
That won't take, that doesn't affect till twenty twenty five, so we'll play into part a little bit um when this agreement moves forward on whether or not they would sign off on a minimum assessed value, but we've got a pretty safe boundary for what that assessed value is, you know, looking at risk there, I think we'd have an issue getting it signed off on.
Next step, let's see if your attorneys come up with a check. We're going to have a motion.
Any other question? With the idea that time is a, is a factor.
So if there's six A, do I hear a motion to present forward with that? That model? Six A.
Not, not the way it stated there.
Make the motion to move forward.
Cause we have to, we have to approve that before we approve the attorneys, correct?
You cannot prove the attorney to go in and negotiate, but they, they have to approve terms, so if this, these terms aren't going to be approved, then you have to set those terms, but they're not going to be completed.
So we can, so we can approve six B without end table six A? That would be your say?
Yeah, you can, you can approve six B without approving six A.
Yeah, is that what, what you guys would like to do?
Yeah, cause the attorney's going to leave certain places blank, and then talk about to fill one in.
All right, so do I hear a motion to table six A?
So.
All right. Motion by Peters, second by Chief to table six A, consideration approval proposed TIP. Roll call.
I ask a quick clarifying question before you guys move forward with that. At what point can we submit plans? These are huge. If you, if you approve B without A, can we still provide plans? To the city for review?
You can provide the plans for review at any time for your project.
That was not my understanding of the last conversation that we had there.
You can't start work if you're looking at the system's options, there can be no work started, um, as I understand, there's an IDDA application in the works possibly as well.
Yes, but that's based on a rental aspect, right, because we are owner and tenant, so it doesn't have any construction from skin then.
But the, it's, is it for the high quality works?
It is, but it's based on the, the lease application.
Okay, so as I understand it from IDDA, they made it um clear not to start any construction on the project as long as you're applying for that, that um high quality work.
Right there, I'll clarify that.
Jobs, okay. As far as we're concerned, plans can be turned in, and that's not going to impact um the agreement.
So that would help keep, would be.
Yes, yes.
In their face.
I think city staff could turn in pretty good on their account pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you, sorry for that. My, that was a good point.
Chief?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Dr.
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Six B, looking for motion then to send this to Ellington Council.
Question?
And questions on the letters, or letter for engagement?
So.
Motion by Dr. Second by Collins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Six C, discussion of potential future use of ARPA funding. That if you bring somewhere?
Yes, so um for tonight's agenda, I just put discussion on there, so the council could determine how they would want to proceed with um taking action, if we want that to go on the next offender, and we want to do um a committee of the whole to discuss some of that a little bit further. On the ARPA funds, uh Eldridge was awarded one million, twenty one thousand, nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Um, the costs that are eligible are anything incurred after March third, twenty twenty one, but they have, the funds have to be obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, so we're looking at needing to obligate those in our next budget cycle. Um, they have to be fully expended by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Right now, we've categorized the entire amount under the general allowance amount um to revenue loss, which opens up the availability to be able to use that in pretty much any, any general fund expenditure that doesn't go against mitigating COVID nineteen in any way, um, and then it cannot be used on pension or debt services or any tax revenue that's lost in the years to um twenty twenty one and after. So as long as we're not making up for any lost generated revenue from property tax base, pretty much any expenses after that um will be eligible under the categorization of general revenue loss. So the council will need to start looking at what projects they want to allocate those funds to and start making some decisions on how you might allocate those in that upcoming budget cycle.
Well, if it's one project or one time purchases, um, at what point do we need more ground for water treatment facility, I know that's utility board, but that's one of the uses you use your book guns for. Um, do we look at ground for the future or city hall, city shop? We, I, I don't want us to get in with the pattern of this council or future council spending as reflecting films.
Right, which um they are not restricted any longer to not using them for operating under the way that they're categorized right now, so you can use them for infrastructure, parks, administrative costs, public safety, um, you can use them for projects that you may not have had the funds to do before, or you can use them to push along some of the projects that we were waiting on other funding sources for, they can be used as a general uh non federal match for grants, so there are a lot of options out there, um, but you'll want to have that, that time to discuss how you're going to use those, if you're going to use it all on one big project, or if you're going to fill a couple of gaps in, in revenue sources for some of the other projects that are trending planned. That, that discussion will have to happen sooner than later to be able to prepare for those and determine what other funding we might need.
And so do that in a committee of the whole.
Yeah, I agree.
Are there any questions about the ARPA funding for that amount, um, or anything that's come up in the past that you need information gathered on before that next conversation happens? for that amount or anything that's come up in the past that you need information gathered on before that next conversation happens?
But, but I just.
Next specific projects at this point that have been discussed.
Unfortunately, there's no such thing as free money.
We'll get scheduling committee of the whole.
Anything else? Seven A. For motion to open a public hearing on rezoning of parcel nine, three, two, seven, zero, three, zero, zero, six.
So moved.
Parcel nine, three, two, seven, zero, one, zero, zero, three, from SA suburban to agricultural I two and the general industrial. Motion by Peters, second by Collins.
Peters?
Hi.
Doctor?
Hi.
Cheek?
Hi.
The public hearing is seven thirty-one. Any here, have anything to say? Do you hear a motion to close public hearing on rezoning parcel nine, three, two, seven, zero, three, six, zero, zero, six, and nine, three, two, seven, zero, one, zero, zero, three, Mesa Suburban Agricultural to I two General Industrial.
Motion to close public hearing?
Okay.
Motion by Peters, second by Cheek to close public hearing, roll call.
Cheek?
Hi.
Collins?
Hi.
Peters?
Hi.
Doctor?
Hi.
Close. Consideration on first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen, rezoning of parcels nine, three, two, seven, zero, three, zero, zero, six, and nine, three, two, seven, zero, one, zero, zero, three, from SA Suburban Agricultural to I two General Industrial. Before I read this, Jeff kind of calling you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Um, these both, these parcels are part of the Isla Taylor Family Trust. As you saw on the map in your package, they're located on Byrd Melt Road, just north of the railroad track. The future use plan, land use plan of the city of Eldridge has these as heavy industrial, these are the categories in the land use plan. So the changing of this would be in accord with our future land use for this area.
This is basically a project to further develop that land down the rail spur, correct?
Yeah, the real estate developer has some experience in rail warehousing. And that's kind of what they're marketing it as. We'd have to look at that. There would be some challenges to overcome before that can be developed. There's currently no water sewer on that side of Byrd Melt. You're talking to Tonya, lift station would have to be insulted the sewer. Byrd Melt Road right now is not set up for the type of heavy truck traffic that it would take to do something like this. But this would be the first step in starting to develop that area. And, and again, it's our, our future land use for that area is this. So the planning zoning commission approved it at the May team meeting on, and the staff recommended that give you a zone.
Any other questions for Jeff? Okay. Ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen. An ordinance amending chapter two titled via the Elder City Code repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance and providing for an effective date. Section one, that the zoning map referred to in chapter two titled via the Elder City Code and being part of the ordinance of the city of Eldridge is so far as said map pertains to landowner parcel nine, three, two, seven, zero, three, zero, zero, six, and nine, three, two, seven, zero, one, zero, zero, three, described as containing fifty-eight point four five acres, more or less. This parcel is currently SA Suburban Agricultural District and is being rezoned to I two General Industrial District. In addition, the filing parcel map is attached here with and make part here too, as the same pertains to the said area is enacted as substitute in lieu of the same area described as shown in the said district map. Yet further enacted that the zoning map together with the boundaries of the district's textations, notations, references, another information shown thereon as the same pertains to the area described above are and by way of amendment made part of the zoning ordinance of the city of Eldridge, Iowa, as you have the same force and effect with respect to said area as its zoning map and all notations, references, and other information shown thereon were as fully set forth or described therein. The original said amendment is property attested. It is on file with the city clerk of the city of Eldridge. Section two repealer, all ordinances and resolutions of parts of the ordinances resolution in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, effective date, this order shall take point, shall take effect upon passage and publication by, provided by law. Do I hear a motion to approve first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen?
There's more, that's okay.
That's the other. That's the end of this on your backside.
Make a motion for first readings. Uh, twenty twenty-three thirteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Cheek, second by Collins to prove the first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen, rezoning of parcels nine, three, two, seven, zero, three, zero, zero, six, and nine, three, two, seven, zero, one, zero, zero, three, from SA Suburban Agricultural to I two General Industrial. Roll call.
Discussion?
Sure.
Discussion?
Yes.
I'm totally not comfortable with this. Like, I wasn't totally comfortable with the one on South First Street. We jumped through the hoops, which I go to no on, and rezoned it down to for anticipation of something to come. With that business backed out. So now we're sitting with a hundred and twenty acres down there. It's just I two, our most intense zoning that we have. Almost anything can go in. The problem may not be with the I two. It might be a combination problem between the I two and our permitted uses. Permitted uses on review. On, so just blue sky, and we want fifty-six acres of a railing that's going in our industrial area. Possibly, or neither are zoned. It's that's the question I had. We don't know what's going in there. We're getting the most intense zoning we have without consideration. I have reservations about that.
Catword is a impetus for this rezoning originally.
The property owner. And then that's. And, you know, as I stated before, this is on our own, the city's own future land use plan. So if that's not what we want there, then we should probably take some steps to change our zoning or our future lands. Because this follows what we previously said that we want there.
I mean, prime example is a little bit later in the agenda. What about putting up another ready mix? Because there's a private ready mix plan to go here and not add, add much to the tax base. You know, it's, a lot of it depends on what intentions of going in there would be. But we could get a rail yard where we would get actually zero increase in the tax base. Because that's what we want in the heart of our industrial area. It might be unassured. I'd like to see down there, but I'm only one vote.
Correct. They're, they're trying to market it toward a warehousing operation that would use the rail. There's possibility that other landowners around there, they've been speaking to them, that they'd have a bigger parcel and possibly develop it for this warehouse. And again, I'm nothing's been signed yet, but as a seller, I mean, you would want to have all this place so that you could get a faster sale instead of waiting, you know, two months for this process to take place.
True, if it doesn't sell when we're sitting here with fifty-six acres of obvious intensive zoning that we have.
But again, the future land use map, so that's what you guys wanted to be. So if that, if it's not, then
well, it could, it could be if it was warehousing something else, like you're saying, not knowing what it is, it could be a array of things.
Correct, yeah, there's a lot of goals there.
Maybe we need to look in the future, putting more things on permitted uses on review to strengthen our I two zone.
I agree.
Yeah, can't see in the future, it'd be nice to know what they're intended uses if they would sell it before, and if it's have anything pending or that, is it a tight issue here?
Right, right now, it's, they're just marketing it as that. You know, that's who they're marketing to. That's who the the realtor they have hired to market the property that is federally used. Warehouse. But again, that is amazing. Because me, the councilman, Dr. He said that's what's going to go there.
Right.
Um, but yeah, you're uncomfortable with things that we have the I two uses that are permitted uses, that you need to look at the ordinance and change your ordinance.
They got homework to do.
I'm happy to do it. You guys just, yeah, give me some guidance and what you'd like to see moved, and I, I'm happy to write it.
I mean, this is first reading, there's gonna be two more.
Correct.
I just have reservations, especially after the last time we did this, the developer with the project backed out and was going to Princeton, Illinois.
Yeah, and I could have the Taylors come to the next meeting, like to talk to them about it. Isla Taylor is like Kathy's sister.
No, it's her family. I'm not questioning the family. I'm more questioning the realtor.
Sure, yeah. No, but that's, you know, that's fine. They know more than I do, you know, I'm just oh, what was that? If you'd like to, if you'd like me to mind for the next meeting, I'd have you do that, like, you know, start looking at ordinance changes part of the next meeting, I might do that.
Right, and the second page, the last in the packet here gives some possibilities of use for that. Would you like the clarification on expanding this or narrowing it?
Are you on that?
Themselves, yeah.
I think we should probably expand permitted use on review.
Like move, move some from the permitted uses to the use on review.
Correct, yeah.
I would agree with.
Yeah. And we don't want to curtail, you know, but we don't want to protect ourselves. Future development in those areas.
Directly, the two parcels directly north of this, which I believe are owned by Dave Meyer, would go into a lighter industrial category. So this would be, these would be the last two parcels going north on the land use map that would be heavy industrial.
And these would have access off of Silver Town Road.
These would have access off of Byrd Melt. And then there's the railroad, and then there's two parcels. And then there's Silver Town.
Okay.
Uh, but you're getting into the airport landing zone, so the two parcels closest to Silver Town would have a very low height.
Threat restriction.
Yeah, these two parcels even start on the southern border, that's twenty foot, and then go up the only thirty foot at the rear. So they're still a pretty low height requirement on anything that could be built there.
Difference if it's going to be warehousing or if it's going to be jumper.
Yep. I agree.
Director Adrian Blackwell, seven forty-five. So do I hear a motion to approve the first reading? And then have Jeff look at. Yes, Bruce?
I made a motion already. For first reading.
Cheek, come on.
I know what I meant. I was going to add, ask Jeff to expand that.
Well, he can just do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then roll.
Doctor?
I'm going to vote no on this.
Collins?
Alright.
Blackwell?
Lasting, sorry.
Alright, sorry.
Cheek?
Hi.
And Peters?
Uh, I, for now.
Seventy. Before I read this resolution, Beth, can I call on you again for this American Acres?
Uh, sure. This is a, a final fire because the parcel is only being split into, into two lots. So Phil says if you're splitting in three or fewer, that you can go right to the final platting off this mid of pretty much the plat. So a final plat application was received and the vision that you're signing in packet is included. It's basically a simple subdivision to lots. They aren't following our water main. The original water main easement that was on the property is being changed to a utility easement. The developer was gracious enough to help us find exactly where that water main is located. And the plat was changed slightly to exactly follow that water main. So the water main is down the middle of that block line that separates the two properties. There's utilities run around the edge of the property. And that's basically how it's there. Are you guys from, well, first, so if there's any questions, they may be able to answer further, but I'm happy to also knock on the screen if we need to.
Also. Stop, no, no, it's just. So will we have to do a vacation of the water easement and create a use for easement?
Correct, yeah.
When this is, you'll do all, do that all at one time? Yeah, that'll be filed at one time with.
This property is basically across the street from Lewis Machine Tool.
It is just directly north of Mobile Oil. And it'd be the last large lot before basically we had the Hamilton Farm and go out of the city limits.
Any questions for Jess?
I'd like to see the ten-foot easement all the way around.
Yeah.
Councilman Dr. You have, oh, put that question. I actually, great, the city engineer didn't even know me to include that, and I just. Councilman Dr. Cut, please.
Consideration Resolution two thousand twenty-three fifteen is creating the final plat for American Acres. Whereas the final plat for American Acres has been submitted by the Eldridge Industrial Belvers LLC on the property, and whereas the final plat has been found to be substantial in according with the planning requirements for the city of Eldridge and has been approved by the Eldridge Planning Zoning Commission on May eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Eldridge hereby approves the final plat for American Acres passed to approve this fifth day of June two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-three, the final plat of American Acres?
Motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen, that's right.
Sorry. Motion by Dr. Second by Blackwell. Roll call.
Collins?
Hi.
Blackwell?
Hi.
Cheek?
Hi.
Peters?
Hi.
Doctor?
Hi.
Seventy. Scott, in approving city rotation, participation in the YMCA company membership program to help benefit to full-time employees. Company membership program is a cost-sharing contribution to an employee's YMCA membership, which the city contributes twenty dollars per month on enrolled employee, and it's matched by ten dollars per month contribution to YMCA. Correct. That is my calling for this, please.
Sure.
Understanding that this option was talked about just kind of high level maybe last year, and there was an interest form kind of sent out to. Understanding that this, uh, option was talked about, um, just kind of high level, uh, maybe last year, and there was, uh, an interest form kind of sent out to the employees to see who would be interested in participating in a program like this. Um, so it's an organization membership program, it's available to any business or organization that wants to partner with the Y, where the business or organization would, um, pay twenty dollars a month for your full-time eligible. Um, benefit eligible employees, and the Y would then cover ten dollars a month, which would cover an individual membership. If they have a family membership, it's still the same contribution, so the Y and the business would cover the thirty dollars, and then the family would cover the other half part of that membership. Um, based on thirty-five full-time employees that we have currently, uh, if the council would move forward and every single full-time employee would participate, you would be looking at seven hundred dollars a month or eighty-four hundred dollars a year. Based on the interest form that went out, um, there was a response of about twelve people that were interested, so I'd say that would be what we were looking at low end, uh, which would be twenty, two hundred and forty dollars a month, two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars a year to move forward with. Um, this option is a benefit for eligible employees.
If we did something like that, we'd have to treat it in a fashion, we're in private industry, you have certain dates you can enroll in programs. So we had employees, we chose to do this, we need to pick a date and say, here's your week to enroll. You don't enroll by this date, you're not in it till the next year, till that period comes up again. Uh, because we need to know our exposure, the other part of me is. Give them seven, seven million dollars, bill, bill, they should just waive it for us.
Yep.
I know a lot of corporations do do this for their employees, um, when we looked into it earlier, we did no discount on our insurance for the way of health and wellness. So there's no benefit there, it's just what kind of, um, benefit do we run ahead to our employees' packages? For package.
Along those lines, we're contractually obligated to offer it for the police department specifically, um, so it does offer a. Larger facility with a little more access to more equipment than what we can currently house right here.
Pass, the latency employees went to the fitness center for free. Pay hourly and salary employees.
There would have to be a open enrollment period. Bring a tiny frame, bring with council, Dr. Does.
Otherwise, you'd be changing all the time, and who's gonna track them?
Right, yeah, that's a, certainly, period where that police noticed that there was something out, and it clear-cut that line, ordered rolling.
And that would enable the police, we've got, well, Joe's the only one that lives in town. So the other officers could go to the Davenport Y or otherwise to closer to their residence.
Is this something you guys wouldn't consider now, or do you like to table this and consider this as part of the package of any negotiations?
That's not for a few years, is it?
Uh, it was next year.
Um, the contract only goes back to twenty twenty-four, so we negotiate, uh, new CBA would be effective twenty twenty-five, and I believe the police goes through twenty-five, so the next, um, CBA would be effective in twenty twenty-six. So this would be part of basically their, their benefits package. I would imagine writing up some terms on, um, if they cancel. They wouldn't be eligible to, to re-enroll if they changed their mind until that next open enrollment and all of that.
Can I ask a question? Uh, Joe, didn't you tell me at one time that the Sheriff's Department gets a deal on this, but we didn't?
Yes.
Can you explain that to us?
Not really, I just was fooled that, uh, Scott and I have a deal set up at the library, and we are all in, very, very young, we're shit. Uh, did more than. I know, I don't know if they have the sign up, the particular sign up time, I can find out, I know before, where I've been at before, it's, uh. That's my suggestion, and it's usually, it's within the first or second week of January, and you give about ten days for people to sign up. Then if they won't sign up by that time, they have to wait till the top of the year, is normally, it kind of helps with the city on their going into budget time, that it creates.
Check with the county.
You should check with my.
They have the same type of thing set up, and so it's just essentially for the employees, but it could be some.
It could be this.
I'll check with them and get some information.
We participate through my wife's employment, and it's. Good, it's set up for us.
I know, city of Bedmore, they actually have it where you have to. And actually utilize your.
Yes, that's what my wife says too.
So why don't we not take action tonight, but.
Do that, so table this for clarification.
Yeah, check with that, check with my, see how they do it.
Let me put together, um, what that, uh, getting those answers and put together kind of a draft policy to work off of.
They may have one that we could just, pardon my French, plagiarize.
Sorry, you said county and.
City, but.
So I hear a motion for tabling this for further clarification from the county of Bedmore.
Good move.
Motion by Dr. Second by Collins, to enable Y M C A for further clarification, roll call.
Blackwell?
Aye.
She?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Or just, fine.
I'm gonna have discussion consideration of approving the A D T P time and attendance software, Nevada?
Uh, one of the things within the first week, I think, there could be three or four people on, moving to digital or electronic time cards, so, um. One of the software that's available out there right now is essentially a web-based timesheet, where particularly our Public Works and Police Department, um, would have a hard time being on. Like a punch-in, punch-out time clock type system. As opposed to some of our other departments that have more regular shifts, and we aren't looking at shift differentials and overtime, we can't pay and all of those things. Um, this particular software is essentially the same thing as your paper timesheet, the employee can fill it out daily or at the end of the week, or really even at the end of the pay period. They go in and they choose their cost center, if they're doing comp time, if they're doing overtime, they've got a shift differential paid. Once they fill all of that in, they send it, they submit, it goes off to their supervisor for approval. Once all of those approvals are in, um, we can import it right into our payroll system, which is gonna eliminate some of that manual entry, um, or payroll in the office on the office staff, so we're gonna. Cut down on some of those man, manual entry errors and be much more efficient, it will take, it takes several hours, I think, right now to, to run the payroll. Um, just essentially can be done all electronically at that point, it also allows for, um. Looking at your paid time off accruals, you can look out as far ahead as you need to, if you're trying to plan and manage time off and what you're gonna have. Um, it tracks vacations, you can either those in a year ahead of time, uh, right now, it's just a standalone system just for, um. Your timesheet management, but this software does offer things if you were looking into different options down the future, like scheduling, which would be, um, beneficial, I know for sure for. Our police department and probably for public orders and things too, where their shifts are gonna all be electronic, and you're not trying to put those on a paper calendar and then change them, and people call off or. Big agent put in and things like that, so, um, pretty basic, um, timesheet software. What we're looking at for a cost proposal, we have seventy-nine employees currently on our payroll, that's counting all of our part-time, um. And ten employees, anything like that, that's our full payroll, we would be looking at two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents a month. Um, which is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents per year to have all employees enrolled into this time system. It doesn't change any policies or practices, so we shouldn't see any kickback or any, um, issues with the unions as far as terms of employment or work conditions or anything like that.
This also would help the, the girls with, the, the police payroll is kind of tricky with, uh.
Right, trying to enter their shift differentials and, and getting everybody in on the right, um. Point two five an hour for differentials or different time costs and things like that, so it will eliminate that, that error a lot. Um, probably have a pretty smooth cost savings when you're looking at. Every time one of those employees need to go back and correct the taxes and get them turned in, so. One little error on payroll, a pretty big cost impact on the city of.
And this would also come in handy with learning that for like cross-training.
I think so.
Down the road, it would be easier for everybody to use that system.
Yeah.
To do that, yes, somebody with a bond on the cake or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, you can work payroll because you're, you're not having to, it's our, it's gonna all be done by the employees and the supervisors that are familiar with, um, their departments, and those cost centers are gonna be set up by. The team at A D P, we're gonna give them all of our information and policies, and they set all of that up. So essentially, it'll come down to the employees just picking what, what there's, what they need to have for their pay for those hours that they were in, and then. The, whoever's doing payroll will be able to just import it right into the system, but that happens if you're, you know, so it'll be really easy to get everybody, um, in the office trained on that, that software, plus they'll use it daily too, so.
How are the employees doing now?
Paper timesheets, everybody writes down on paper, they give it to their supervisor, the supervisor signs off on it. Um, then those timesheets go to the office staff that does the payroll, they look at each timesheet and try to type that in manually for. Which, which little cost center it's written next to, how many hours it is, trying to decipher handwriting, and it could be a pretty tricky.
Done on a daily basis, a weekly basis, or a bi-weekly basis?
Two weeks, every two weeks.
But they're recording their time on a daily basis.
I think, you know, it's really each individual, however they choose, whether they write down in a little book and then put it all in a timesheet, you know, there, there's not really any way to track or regulate that, because. Timesheets are given to employees and they turn them at the end of the time period.
Most people, me included, I can't tell you what I did two weeks ago, it was an hour and twenty minutes or an hour and.
Right.
And it'll still be on, on them for that hour, but they track their time, however they write it down and they're tracking it now.
Yep.
Yeah, within the police department, uh, it'd be really pretty hard for the officers to do it daily, when it weren't for that quarter or anything like that, because that's the thing. Guys don't do it, so for every other week, and then they forget that they have, they're, they're losing out on their time, so our guys do pretty good at getting their timesheets done, because they have. Our timesheets also have, I can't lay it off top of my. We have probably seven or eight different A. Uh, settings within our timesheets, and that's where we've had a lot of issues, where we get a lot of mistakes on payroll. Uh, where guys have to get their checks cut, or they have to reimburse money, if they've been overpaid, and then tax, so I guess it'd be an issue, but I know. I hate to be the one putting all those numbers in and trying to decipher it, maybe because there's so many different line items for the police department. Uh, and we've added another one, because now when they work special desks at the community center, we have a new line item that the community center just billed, certain, that's a, also for two, so. The, this program will be far easier to be able to eliminate a lot of mistakes, make sure that, uh, right, pay is coming out, or. Time off, or account time, it's being awarded, or even the community centers that put the info, so police department for that's later.
If the time cards are wrong, it's the employees.
Well, the supervisors are signing off on them, so ultimately, it's gonna come down to supervisors keeping track of what their employee shifts are, and knowing when their employees are gone, and making sure that within their departments, they've got a good structure for, um, chain command and reporting those absences, so that. They can go back and know if they're looking at the timesheet, if that looks right, um, and I would say most, probably all of. Public Works and PD for the most part probably do go and put in their times daily, because they have, their schedules differ so much. Probably more of our, our people were always working the same, same shift, or going in the end of the week, and right now, they had a vacation day to fill in the rest. Um, so it's really just dependent, I think, probably on employee.
Well, this system track the vacation days.
Yes, yeah, because when they go, when if they put in a vacation day, they're gonna have to hit the, their vacation for where that pay is coming out of, or every day that they put in hours, really, they can even split. A day and put in six hours of regular pay, two hours of vacation, but you have to, um, piece it out for where that pay is coming from. And so it will track that automatically, so to be keeping track of that electronically the whole time on what time off they've accrued and what time off they've used.
Six time, that's a correct.
Six times, personal time.
Yeah, yeah, all of those things that we enter in there, and we'll set it up to how that accrues, and so that system's gonna automatically take care of all of that for us.
I add to that real quick. We're out, police department, officers also have to fill out another form that they actually do on the computer, if they're requesting any time off, or if they have a sick day, they have to fill that out. That's how we're able to keep track of everything, verify that everything's correct on the time sheets too, so even the system would still require our officers to do that, because that's a way for us to keep track of everything, if they're taking time off. Overtimes kept tracked by the supervisors, because no time off could be done without permission from supervisor, and all that can track.
You can do those requests in the system too, so they can go in and request it off, and it's gonna send a notice to the supervisor, and then it will send a notice back to the employee when the supervisor has seen that request and approved it, then it's gonna let them know that. It's been addressed, and so then everybody's gonna have a copy in their email or their text, however they choose to receive it, that they'll have that trail that they requested it off, and they were approved. Or denied.
Well, that's a good thing, so the supervisor, regardless department, can see future requests for vacation times, they don't get too many people gone on the same period.
It's very similar to the system we use at the commercials, I wouldn't say it's identical, but of course, I have a different bit, but it sounds very similar, the notifications to. Time allocations upsource with our business, so we make sure we're allocating the right cost centers, with a budget saving order, fixed. That occur, financial director, supervisor to direct an employee, to ensure that that also is changed, helps. Helps to have multiple eyes on that, we're watching finances, and we're watching the budget, plus it holds the employee accountable, to ensure that they're putting allocation time into the right, right allocation code as well, so it's a. It's a center process, back and forth, multiple eyes on it, taking over what's occurred within the city, there's more. This is a, one, one of the steps that'll help us to track and maintain time off, ensure that employees are allocating time right, employees are working, so. Put it down in the right, like, obligation spot.
Those employees have access to this system on their data.
Just for their own.
Yes, so we'll be able to generate W twos from this program also?
Um, I don't think that that is, we haven't talked about that as part of the software package that we're purchasing, I know it's available with the system, I don't know if it's. Part of this particular package, but I would imagine that it is, I did ask about buying this. But, um, I know, I know that option's available, I just don't know if it's an extra cost or not, I wouldn't imagine it is, but I don't wanna say that for sure until I ask that question.
Some of them are even capable of the employee, um. Taking their own pay stuff every time electronically.
Yeah.
Definitely, it says that option too, you go in and you have your old basket, you can go and see vacation time, accrual, sit time, personal time. Which was paid, any overtime that was included in there, that was, that was approved, so, and yes, as, as Nevada was saying, you get a email back and forth, regardless, and it's been approved. To the supervisor, gets approved ahead of time, so you know, very crazy to track, I think it's worth the money, I think it's worth the money to, to spend on that, or. Collaborative processing.
Could we also do clothing allowance on that? Because we have, both entities have different clothing allowance thresholds, it'd be nice to track that on a annual basis electronically.
Yeah, that's. And that, I mean, there's a lot of capabilities of what you can do with this system, it's just. What tier, I think you're at of what, but I will check and see if that's part of this or something.
Like to do another, three times, six times. Might be able to do that, it'd be just so the supervisor. Might be able to do that. It'd be just so the supervisors or Joe wants to say how much did so and so spend, it doesn't have to pull out the records.
Well, Brandon probably keeps records too.
Yeah, she got a file.
But you could just push a button and say, here's the reason why you're in a day.
Instead of it automatically tracked.
Yeah. And helpful for the employee.
Sure.
Yes, um, I'm all for ADP. I think it's a great system. My question to all of you is why wouldn't we want a time clock? Why wouldn't you want a time clock in the office? Why wouldn't you want it for the officers and why wouldn't you want it in the city shop?
My answer to that, that's just my perspective, is when you get departments that are going on callouts, especially when you have, um, employees that don't necessarily live in the city, um, I think sometimes it can, it can end up costing the city for them to run in when they might not have to go to the shop to do their callout. Um, because they get paid automatically. I think it's two hours, most of them, I think for public works to do a callout. And if one hour of that, then you get into the shop and clocking in and you're going back. You may start looking at increased costs for those callouts, um, for them to run into the shop to clock in.
That's interrupt your meeting, but our, hey, we use a system and you could, that you could say which employees can clock in, they could clock in from their phone wherever they are.
Yeah. They're on, they're on, they're clocking from your.
Well, you can set the parameters too, right? You could give it as, um, ADP's one of the biggest payroll providers in the country. I would assume that they have that type of capability.
They do have the one that clocked in from your phone. I don't know that, but that's an option.
I know a couple of companies that have terminated employees because they clocked in before they got to work.
We didn't see exactly where they were, they clocked in.
Yeah, I, I think we have to have something like that in place. Honestly, we've had issues in the past and I don't want any more issues. If we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it right. And then we don't have to worry about issues coming down the pipe like we've had in the past. So if, I, I would like that looked into too and what that costs.
With our D cards, one of those things, like tablets.
I, I like to say, I, I, I like this idea. And I like the idea of, you know, clocking from your phone, especially for the law enforcement and public works. So they, when they leave home, they can hit it and go to wherever they need to go. Years ago, I used to go pass accidents, go get a car and then come back. It, it's, it's crazy. Uh, it saves time and money to do it that way. Because as soon as they leave home, they're only clocking. So I, I like, I like this idea.
Plus it makes it easier when guys have to work, don't let parents have them. Yeah, they can clock in, they can come home.
Well, I believe some of those systems, not only they have pass keys, but some of them, the thumbprint readers send that, right?
So like in the office here, they could just put your thumb in, you're gone. And they could punch out for lunch, punch by when they're gone, come back, punch back in, leave for the day, punch back out. We do the same thing at Grant even, it's a fingerprint and it works great.
Maybe this can be both for the officers or the emergency respond for public works guys. They could do by their phone in an emergency.
Yep.
And then.
Check how it works with the cost, cost centers when you're clocking in and you can pick your different, if you're on a callout and overtime and things like that, make sure that that works from the mobile interface because it's a little more limited. But I would imagine that they've got something or if nothing else, the supervisor would have an option to change that and.
Yeah.
If they needed to.
And usually if you're gonna get called out, your time should start right then. You know, if you have a bad accident or something where you need more people, when you call them on the phone and say, hey, I need you. So time starts right then.
Our time starts as soon as you get called.
Yeah.
But also on something like that, uh, an officer gone for training. It's just an automatic eight hours per day that they're gone. And if that's something that supervisor can go in and actually deal with that, that will make it harder to do. Because that way officers aren't thinking, right, I'm clocking in. I have, and I do overtime.
And I think we'll wanna check into, just to give any clarification on you're allowing that mobile, you're basically, you have to have something at the shop without having to provide that technology to the employees to do this, do that. If you're ever gonna require that machine punch in, um, there, you have, you may have to be able to provide whatever technology they need to keep that. So we'll wanna look at those as well.
You should probably run this by the utility also.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause whatever we do, we have to be, they have to be consistent with us or we're consistent with them. They're all our employees. We can't have one group of employees working on the one basis and the other not. So we probably need to run this, get their opinion, uh, for the electric, or electric and water employees.
Right. Like Stephen too, who are on emergencies, saving time when they come in. Yeah, they have to go and get the vehicles, but the time to get in the building, punch in, punch out. If there's maybe power failure, that, that can hold it in process as well.
Imagine on callout check could go to this situation first and get eyeballs on.
That's right. Yeah, so.
But we have to be consistent with utility.
Right, right. We got to do. So it, depending how much this is, this is gonna be, it's a, it's a good idea, Congressman Collins, you're looking at, I kind of know. But I guess we had to look at trusting our city employees too, that.
You've been bit.
That they're doing their job as well too, and they're trusting them, you know, that, that going in.
You have to have the ability to verify.
Yes, yeah.
It's, uh. And we may need to come up with a policy, you know, someone's abusing this system, all that will be dealt with.
But I mean, if you can use it, use the system to punch it out, which is all supervisors, they can go through, they can, they can verify. So it's gonna be an experimental house to include like a punch in and punch out. You know, with that, again, I, I'm a little favor of that. We, we, we have to, we have to ensure that we're trusting the faithful employees as well. There's, there's, there's so much more to say that, that you can, that you have, yes, mentioned you've heard before. This is why, this is one reason why I implemented this system and why we have an additional eyes on the process. But we want to ensure that we're trusting our employees that are doing the job and if you're not on top of, why we manage it, we're to go.
So make your motion then to table this for further discussion with, uh, utility.
Remove.
Check.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's aye's habit. Right, activity report, so our heads aren't here. Chief Sester, you have an update, police department?
Not today, no, we're not. Good off tonight is, uh, probably Wednesday, Thursday, you know, announcement on choosing for the K nine officer.
What day will that be?
Uh, Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
We've just finished up a few things, so, um, it's all sent out an email, everybody's all, we start. So, most people have that final, I'll put that out there, but. And then, uh, the training actually starts July thirty-first.
Have you been working with your show, you have coming events, is that all in order or?
Yeah, that's all set up, uh, they put out and we'll all sign up for the traffic details for them, so. They're all, they said they're all set ready. They're getting a lot of calls since that one for their shows, so we'll start getting a lot of calls for, you know, hearing the big booms, complaints, buying a prayer. Probably should be a pretty good show this year.
Have you received any more funding, the K nine unit, speed that you, or, or, you know, donations coming?
Uh, the last one that we got was, uh, the thirteen thousand from the RDA grant. Uh, I believe, uh, the Scott County Attorney's Office is going to be, or that's ten thousand for the K nine, but I'm not a percent sure yet. But I should be finding out this week on that. Um, I think once that's done, I did some, some numbers, I believe we can get that ten thousand. We have twenty, twenty-one dollar, you know, be great for the K nine movement. Um, the squad are also, the K nine squad, uh, been in touch before, two-four, uh, he's been sending me pictures with the progress and everything, uh. I know the Class Eight Veterans Club is doing another car show for the police department on the seventeenth of June. Definitely a squad before adding the car show, so we can actually present a car show. He's pretty nice.
So that bill was not the final payment?
Which bill?
Wait, a bill on our bills for twenty-six thousand?
Yeah, that's the final, that's the payment for the whole up hitting of the, the squad, he put all his hours, he, all the, equipment and everything else, all the way through everything in there. So that, that is the final bill from him. If there is any additions onto it, would be if he found some stuff that might need to be on squad, but right now I'm pretty sure he got it.
Um, could you explain a little bit on that, I think it's a call in? Or something through the state, there's a thing on social media about trying to get people to call in about K nine or write in.
To vote. Oh, it's a vote, it's another grant, it's five states, uh, it's a grant that Officer Johnson found, uh, between five states, they separate the groups by the size of the agencies and stuff. And they take, uh, city, I guess, the top votes. And what we need is a fifteen thousand dollar grant that they'll receive and I don't know what ended. That's ninety.
Okay.
Uh, so I believe there's something from that too.
They're gonna get your free press.
Well, that one there was, I had a last minute notice that here, just came across that grant, so. Seems like a lot of were voting, but all closed down now, so we're just waiting on the numbers.
Thank you, Chief. Adam would like to give him an update.
Uh, just a couple of quick updates, uh, Councilon Chief asked that I reach out to Wilbur Construction and get an update on the construction project for City Hall for the six-year entrance. Um, I did reach out to him. He is looking at, um, likely June twenty-third would, for twenty-fourth, would be the first Saturday that he can be available. So he's looking at starting the construction, um, hopefully that last weekend in June. I, I reached out to Bob with Maloney's, um, both the chamber and Maloney's both asked for that July eighth closure and the, the council wanted to make sure that they connected first and that there were no, um, activities overlapping. So I did reach out to Bob, him and the chamber have been in communication and they are both doing the same event. So they just essentially asked for the same closure and they are good to go there. And then just an update on the service line warranty program that, um, has been in Eldridge for a few years now. Um, I spoke to them the other day about some new products that they have coming out, but they gave me an overview of where Eldridge is at right now, which I thought was kind of interesting. Um, there's currently a hundred and ninety-five customers covered for emergency home repairs on their water service lines. They've maintained two hundred and eighty-three coverage contracts. Um, they completed twelve covered repairs and saved residents over three thousand dollars so far. But they five point five dispatched more on those repairs, so. Program's going good so far and they will have some new, um, products that they're gonna roll out that I can bring to you and have that information.
Please ask them not to put out their products on Eldridge Stationery next time.
I have that discussion with them already.
Or with a mayor's signature, they didn't move, right?
I did talk to them about that.
It confused a lot of residents. They thought that it was the city program and they're calling city hall and it's like.
Yeah, they called.
For the record, we have nothing to do with that. It's a third party.
That was the reason I reached out to them actually. So they're, that should go smoother next time.
When you drop them a letter, get a copy of their letterhead, send it back unto them so they can't copy it and put it on.
Yeah, you know.
Or just put Eldridge Police Department on. No, they won't return it then.
Yeah, probably not.
Well, now that school's out, we don't have a government class here tonight, so that includes our regular open part of our council meeting.
Can you adjourn?
I will close session.
Make that, I have a motion to go into closed session. Don't you motion to go into closed?
I certainly, I make a motion to go into closed session as per IO code twenty-one point five parentheses one, close parentheses, uh.
Second.